Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Select Board to order. It is September 19th, 2022, and it is 6:01 now. And I'd like to stand and do the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag from the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just for anybody at home, Leah Whitman and Lyndon Nichols are on the Zoom. And Skip Clark, Tom Galvin, and Carol Benoit are doing the room, along with the interim town administrator, Antika. Thank you. All right. So to get started, I'd like to, um, do I get somebody to, a motion to accept the minutes from the September 7th, or September, yeah, September 7th meeting?
I'll make the motion. Second?
No, Skip can.
Skip.
I can make the motion, I just have to vote on it. Like, excusing myself, just from what I was told.
Yeah, you have to abstain.
No.
Um, because we have two on Zoom, I do need to do roll call. Skip is abstaining. Lyndon?
Nichols, aye.
Leah?
Whitman, aye.
Galvin, aye.
And Benoit, aye. Thank you. And the Treasury warrant. Before we accept it, we do have a couple of things that were just to draw our attention to, which we have asked the town, um, the interim town administrator to do for us, for payroll or the other warrants.
Okay, thank you. I have a little bit of both. The first is for payroll. Again, so everyone knows either just out of the ordinary expenses, and these are nothing that really need attention, but for election wages, $3,720.48 for the primary, is for the Treasury. And for the warrant, for elevated consulting, $36,585.50. And therefore, the tower construction in Hubbardston, which is, has already been reimbursed by the State 911 Department and are in the account to pay. The other is for sidewalk improvements on Maple, that's for TOSCO construction, out of Chapter 90 funds, $119,748.45. And the last would be the water system improvement on Palmagussett by RFS Corp. for the amount of $275,207.96. Again, not all funded, one goes by an article and just out of the ordinary, so you have reason to see elevated amount.
Any questions on that? I can have.
Motion for the warrant, and Mark 23-6, and the payroll, 23-PW-6.
Second?
Roll call?
Clark, aye. Galvin, aye.
Lyndon?
Nichols, aye, excluding COA and election wages.
And Leah?
Whitman, aye.
And Benoit, aye. Thank you so much. Okay. Anybody here for public comment tonight?
Madam Chair, Luke Connor, Carol Lee, 18 Blueberry Lane. First of all, let me apologize for one of your last meetings or so. I didn't realize I was on the agenda. I didn't show up because I didn't know I was on the agenda, so I apologize for that. Okay? At the last time I was here, in discussion over the Warren Square at the corner of Campbell and Glenwood, I believe it was you, Madam Chair, that suggested that I go and talk to the Historic Commission and have them see if they'll, were to put the article on the warrant. I took your advice and I did go there last meeting. I met with them, I described what we were planning to do, that it would cost the town of Rutland not one dime, how they would be maintained over the years, so that they'd, again, not costing the town of Rutland any money. They said to me, they were emphatic about this, that they did not have the ability to place the article on the warrant. What they did say to me, that they would take a vote to recommend that it go on the warrant. They voted, and by a majority vote, I don't think it was a hundred percent, but I think one dissenting vote, they voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen for the November meeting place on the ballot the article concerning the intersection of Campbell and Glenwood, and naming it the Fred and Shirley Warren Square. So I am coming before you to see if, in fact, you are going to do that, so that would, I don't have to continue to go after, I started and collected a couple of signatures, but I'm waiting. So that's one of the reasons I'm here. And when does the warrant close for this special town meeting in November? Have we set a date?
We are waiting for some figures.
Okay, so the warrant is still wide open. All right.
Correct.
So I'm respectfully requesting, again, that your board place on the agenda, and I have a copy of the warrant that I wrote out with the guidance of the Town Clerk's Office, to see if the town will vote to name the intersection at Glenwood Street and Campbell Street the Fred and Shirley Warren Square, while taking the action in relation there too. So I'm sure you want to, maybe you want to discuss it, take a vote on it. Whatever you do, please let me know, again, what you're, what you decide to do, is the recommendation of the Historic Commission, Part II of this program that you folks created, to get something like that done. Okay?
Great.
So I will leave this.
Thank you.
Just in case you decide. But I would ask that if you reject it, I would like to know why you rejected it, okay? I would like to know why, what is so offensive, what would be so offensive or so, so difficult for the community to deal with, and give me enough time to go out and get those, those signatures.
Certainly.
Okay?
Happy to.
One other issue, before I go. I just heard you, I just heard something mentioned about the sidewalks on, on.
Maple.
Maple, that thing. Uh, that, the section of, the section between the street and the sidewalk where they planted grass, who's responsible to maintain that? Is that the state's job? Is that our job? It's not the individual homeowner. Some homeowners are cutting the grass, others aren't. It looks awful. So I want to know, who, who's responsible for that? Does anybody know?
To answer that question, Louis, it is town property.
That is town, that section right there is town property.
It is within the right of way.
Goes up into town to maintain it.
And I have noticed that, and I also have noticed that some homeowners are going out and cutting them.
Yes.
Themselves.
Right.
Others obviously haven't. They're a couple of three feet tall. But it is town property.
Okay, so is it, is that something we're gonna, because it does look awful, the sections that haven't, in fact, because of the drought, there was no grass grown, it's all weeds, and it's that ugly weed, and it's very high, so.
Let me see what I can do about that, sir.
Okay.
There is still an ongoing punch list for the sidewalk, for.
Oh, I can imagine.
So.
I can imagine.
But I will look into that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
For listening.
Thank you.
For the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Kanakioli, do we have any idea what this square might look like? Have you got anything to, to show us that, what it might look like?
Sure. May I approach?
Sure.
This would give you some idea, there's a similar square in Wells, Maine, that has some of the stuff in it minus the stone, and I'm gonna make sure it's a stone like the one at the top of Prescott Street, and not like what happened down at Anderson Square, which I'm in the process of trying to get that corrected, by the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I took a picture of this while I was up in Wells, if I can find my, my part of it. I don't want to hold up the meeting too long, just saying I was entrusted.
Time, time's up.
What's that? I apologize, I wasn't ready to. This will give you an idea, see, it's a similar sized square, you notice how the grass is cut, maintained, you see the flagpole? Where we're talking about, we want to put a flagpole there, which we will maintain, and it won't cost the town any money.
It's about the same, it's about the same size, Louis, you think?
About the same size, yes. It's basically the same size, and I've got a picture of the, of what the area looks like now, and you can see what the difference is, if I can find that now, it's in there somewhere. Is that it? No, that's not it. But anyway, I'm sure you've been by the, especially you, Mr. Clark, you live right around the corner from there.
That's right.
So I'm sure you're very familiar with what that looks like. But anyway, we would take down the tree, maintain the grass, put the stone, put a, an identification of Warren Square like you did for, for Mr. Anderson, for Ralph Anderson, you know, have that thing, that placate up, up above on the, on the, on the pole there. And we're talking about a telephone, I mean, a flagpole, not the size of, say, the one at the top of Prescott Street, because that would be too difficult. But I have a telescope one in my eye, beautiful. I was asked at the Historic Commission, what about lighting? I have a light over my flags, it's solar powered, so you don't have to worry about it, so that we would be able to have, it's not the brightest light in the world, but at least the flag would be lit at night. So that's, that's the plan. You keep it maintained. Okay?
If you don't mind, Louis, would you show Ms. Whitman the picture you just showed us?
I was on Zoom and heard, but if you have a quick picture, I would love to see it.
Sure. This is, this is the, that's my granddaughter, Louis, she's a beautiful girl. This is what the square, this is basically what Campbell and Glenwood look like. The triangulars and roads coming this way, that way? Identical. So, and there's a flagpole up there in Maine. Now, they don't have the monument there. I want to put the monument like the one at the top of Prescott.
If I may, over there, isn't there already some sort of monument or something?
Edison Redfield found on his property, a stone that looks like, looks like it would be a marker.
Yeah.
But it's, when you get close to it, it's rather ugly. And on this one, to be, we'd have it, we'd either, either have it carved into the stone, Fred and Shirley Warren Square, or have a plaque put on and attached to it.
Yep. Isn't there something for, like, the old radi, radiation bomb things over there also? Like a marker?
I have no idea about that.
I don't know. I thought there was something else.
If there is, well, we wouldn't disturb it.
I thought there was something else over there, but I don't know, maybe.
All I saw was a tree, a pole with the, a couple of stop signs.
Yeah.
Which aren't very effective, because I'm told by neighbors down there, they zoom through there, you know? So maybe we ought to put a blinking one in. What does that, what would that cost the town? Does the state put that in for you?
No, the state was on town property, no, it's all, they're, they're, they're very pricey.
They're like nineteen, twenty thousand dollars, believe it or not.
Are you kidding?
Wow.
Well, it'd be a good fundraiser, for the neighbors in that neighborhood.
Thanks for showing me the picture, Louis.
Huh?
Thank you for showing me the picture.
My pleasure. I hope you'll guess and put the thing on the warrant on. Have a nice night.
Good night. Okay, next.
Excuse me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Dick Williams Volokh. Uh, I've had an opportunity to do a little bit of reading at past the master plan, and it's something like two decades. And one of the things I would like to ask you people, how are you coming along? Are you going to be able to put CPA on to the warrant this fall? Because it was mentioned 20 years ago. And also, the reason why people moving in is because of open space and scenic views. I feel that this thing should get on the books and get rolling if possible, or get, get a vote and find out. And one last thing, how about trying to go around to the schools and have the kids draw something, and have a contest, and have them show what they feel what open space or something like that is? And then, somebody win, and put them on the outside, the sign by the road out there, and try to promote, promote that type of thing. But I feel that, you know, 20 years is long enough, and it's time to get it kicked into gear, because we, we desperately need to have this on the books, you might say, for various things.
Okay. It might, that might be something that we're gonna be doing a, uh, goals and kind of get geared up for this next coming year, so that might be something that we could look at then too, and see what more this, the board might decide to take that on as a bigger than just putting it on the town.
One could only hope. Please, please. Thank you.
Anybody else? Because I glanced over there. All right. Well, I would like us to make a presentation, a proclamation, as a board, so if we want to just go up here and come up here.
I'm ready. You ready? Well, you can.
You all can come up.
Yeah. Group hug?
Yeah, so if you all come up, then. So, the last time that we met, we wanted to.
We do it.
Call out as a proclamation, September, and let me just read it so I don't stumble over it. A proclamation, whereas September is known in the United States as National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness, and whereas suicide often occurs in a moment of unbearable pain, deep despair, or overwhelming hopelessness, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults, and the second leading cause of, um, death among people aged 10 to 34, that's, um, whereas Rutland seeks to support those in our community and beyond who are struggling with mental health. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Rutland designates the month of September each year.
Oh.
As Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, presented on behalf of the Select Board this 19th day of September, 2022, and signed by the board.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, all, I'm hugging, all, I'm hugging. Thank you so much, this means a lot, you know, I was giving some thought to, um, this month. I, I do write, and I'm trying to encourage people to take baby step steps to do things, because I feel like sometimes we talk a lot about what needs to change, but we don't take a lot of action, and it can be very little things, and something like this, you know, someone's gonna see this tonight, or for those of us in the room, and you might reach out to someone that you maybe wouldn't have done that for, or you might check in on, they always say, check in on your strong friends, because you never know how they're feeling. You know, you might strike up a conversation with a neighbor's teenager, and who really needs that connection, and all of those little things really make a difference, so that our town is coming together like this to do this is really important, and really means a lot to myself and everyone at Hope Lives Here, who then have to help the people who lose someone, you know, to suicide, so, thank you so very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
Ah, I'm hugging again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Leah. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us today. I'm hugging you too. I so appreciate it. I'll put this up at Hope Lives Here. Now I have to go home and do school things, so I appreciate you putting us on.
Thank you for coming again.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, we are going to hear from, I'm looking, I'm pausing because I'm wondering, is, is Mr. McCray coming to Mike? He's on. Okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry about that, Dave. Mike, you're on first, if you want to come and talk to us.
Okay.
You! Mr. Michael Moriarty, director.
Mr. Michael Moriarty.
Director.
So I have quite a bit, haven't been here in a while, so, as most of you are aware, Phyllis Tardiere did retire as of July 9th. She still remains with us in a part-time capacity and is helping when she can at this point. We posted that position, the deputy director's position. We did receive one qualified candidate, um, who is supervisor Michelle Saborn, she has over 12 years with the department, would be a great asset to myself as well as the department. Gary and I will be working on finalizing a contract to bring forward to the board to ratify at that point. This position, we can't really put in place until the department itself is back at full staff, because that would take her off the desk and open up another 40-hour week slot in our schedule that would have to be filled with overtime. So until we get back to our full staff, we couldn't really put her in that true position. She has been, um, doing some of the tasks of the deputy director already, and is excellent in those areas. We currently, um, just recently hired three full new, uh, three full-time employees, the first being Julia Laporta from Hubbardston, she's been there for over 20 years. We are sending her to the 53rd Massachusetts 911 Public Safety Communication Academy. This will be our first employee that we actually send to this academy, that has been revamped by the State 911 Department. It will give her most of her state certification she needs, as well as the necessary experience that she's gonna need when she comes back to our department, and I believe it's gonna help out tremendously for a person that has never been in public safety, has no knowledge on the job itself. Secondly is Jody McGinnis, who was born and raised in Rutland. She's coming from Western Regional Dispatch, and has completed three quarters of her training with that department. That being said, where she's at, there in that department with her training, coming here, we expect about three to four weeks of training, instead of our three to six-month training program, due to the fact that she pretty much already has everything that she needs to do the job. She just needs to learn our policies and procedures to move forward. And then lastly, Donald Gerard, he's coming from Patriot Regional Dispatch, has approximately 20-plus years of experience, fully trained, and again, another person that just needs to know the policies and procedures in the geographical area. Once these three people complete the training program, we'll be back to full staff and be able to put the deputy director position in, into place. That being said, we will be losing another employee due to this person accepting another job within the town, um, as a full-time firefighter. So ultimately, the individual's careerable, and finally has the chance to do it, and is gonna be accepting that, so we'll be hiring another person at that point. It never ends. I'm not sure if I updated you guys in regards to the FY 2023 Massachusetts State 911 Development Grant that we did receive in the amount of $619,741. Not sure if I went over that previously. No? Okay. That's gonna fund my salary at $92,000, the deputy director's salary at $70,000, $129,741, to the town of Warren for their assessment. It's a transition award that is awarded to any, any community that comes in after 2018. They pay that community's assessment for three full years, and then the fourth or fifth year is at 50% of the assessment. So that's the new transition that they're giving to all these communities to regionalize. And then $328,000 to fund the department's search to replace our CAD system, which is the records management system that holds all the police and fire, police reports, accident reports, everything from call-in to an accident, so it, we have the money to replace it, so we're in the process of writing a very extensive RFP to put out, and to see what we receive at that point. Now, Gary mentioned the Hubbardson Tower a little while ago, that's on track still, been delayed due to a couple weather events, but this week, the crane should be arriving to put up the, I think it's six or seven sections of steel. At that point, the tower will be up, and they'll be dropping the prefab shelter on its foundation. At that point, utilities need to be installed, and then the radio equipment will be brought to the site to start installation, which will take another few weeks at that point. Um, I think that is it. Yeah.
I have, thank you.
Yeah.
I have, I do have a question. So we had, I didn't, the deputy director's salary.
Yeah.
I thought that was covered under, was it covered by something else, or in its move now, or?
Nope, same, same thing. So last year was covered, 35,000 of it, it was a prorated amount due to the time when we enacted it, but it was 35,000 under the development grant as well.
Okay.
Uh, this is for FY 23, for the full amount this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And so yours is, this is FY 23, 2023 for you as well?
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Is anybody else?
If I may, this is the last year that your salary is eligible under the development grant?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I have one other question, for replacing the CAD system, is it necessary because CAD has kind of gone obsolete, or is there, is there?
Yeah. I, I, yeah. No, the current CAD system that we have right now, there hasn't been any big updates to the system in quite a few years. It's looked the same since, since Nick Monaco started 20 something years ago. There is a lot of new systems out there that provide a lot more tools for the responders out in the field, to better ease their positions out there. IMC can only run on a Windows machine, which a Windows tablet in the cruisers is roughly between $3,000 to $5,000 to put that in. The newer systems are all cloud-based, so you can pretty much run it on any device, reducing the amount of money that these departments have to spend on MDTs to do their job out there. So, we, we have our eye on a few, few products, and hopefully they do respond with the right price, and meet all our needs that we currently have. We obviously don't want to get a new product that doesn't have the same needs that we already have, we're looking for that and more, which a lot of them provide a lot more services than currently IMC does, and the cost is just going through the roof at this point, for no updates.
And I think having, if I may, having the value of a cloud-based system then doesn't necessarily mean that it's, we're on the hook to maintain.
Equipment.
Equipment in.
Servers, yeah.
And in the vehicles as far as, you know, a three or $4,000 system versus a tablet or something that can run a little bit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? Lyndon? Any questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
And next for department update, we have Dave McCray, and you are on Zoom. Dave?
David, you there, David?
Yeah, it somehow muted me.
You're up, you're up, sir. What do you got?
All the kind of new information on the building department, we have new homes going strong, other permits, remodeling and fixing up, or starting to improve, but pick up. starting to improve but pick up possibly from the prices going down. Other information, the Rutland Heights, I've been kind of waiting for that. There's no information on permits on what's going on at Rutland Heights, even though a lawyer did call about wanting to know what kind of plans or drawings we would like. So I imagine that's starting to move forward. Other things in the building department, typical things of warm weather with complaints, same old fences, chickens, noise. There's a lot of shortcomings in the bylaws, some that need to be updated, some that don't exist at all to cover these problems. I've actually talked with Dave George and I've drafted a few new bylaws to take care of some upcoming problems that have occurred this summer that could leave the town as a certain liability. I've gone over with Dave George a number of these items. Plus the fact I brought it up before, you know, zoning needs to really be addressed in this town as far as expanding commercial areas, not as requested, but like ahead of time. Dave George knows that. We're kind of working on that, or he's working on that. Other things, we got some unlawful apartment issues. One of them in particular, I'll be going to court this week on the matter. I guess a judge has requested me to be there for more detailed information on the situation. Unless you have any other questions, I think that's kind of a summary of what's happening.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Nope. I'm off.
Thank you, David. I know just the building probably keeps you busy. You don't mind everything else, so thank you very much.
It's very busy on a part-time hours. I've got, I mean, without Lynn's help, it really wouldn't happen much. She does share a lot of things and I have been putting in a lot of overtime just to try to keep up with her by the day, but it calms down in the winter when the weather gets colder. Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Dave.
Town administrator update.
Who's that? Okay, thank you. I've got just a couple of things. I believe it was you, Carol, that asked me to double-check on the deadlines for ARPA at the last meeting. So again, not again, I'm sorry. The deadline to commit to ARPA projects is 12/31/24. The payments have to be made by 12/31/25. So that gives us, I believe anyway, from what I was initially told, an extra year.
Yeah.
Because I thought it was going to be a year earlier. Now, I did confirm that today, so that's what we have. And I know everybody knows, but right now we have a balance of 987,000 in ARPA funds. Okay?
Thank you.
And recently, as everyone knows, I did attend a regional town administrators' meeting, conference. And out of that, another town has reached out to Rutland to discuss the possibility of shared services for animal control and a conservation agent. I did talk to Chief Monaco about this and also briefly with the town administrator from Paxton, head of Monroe. The chief, our chief Monaco supports this and we would have to go through some finishing touches, if you will. It would obviously reduce the assessment and the cost to Rutland, but all those numbers have to be ironed out and figured out. I've also mentioned at the Peter Crain of Conservation who was going to bring it up at their board meeting to see where he stands and if he can help in this anyway. They said it's a very, very limited part-time position as far as conservation agent in Paxton. So once I have some more items for that, then I'll certainly bring them up for discussion. Also met with Director Buckley, Wachusett Regional School District, and Pat Collier regarding the possibility of a turnaround for buses on Glenwood Place Extension. So we all went up, we met there, and the lay of the land shows that there is really currently no room for a bus to turn around. And that's due to the use of private property, which these buses would have to do, and that would involve extensive hold harmless agreements and/or waivers. The discussion is ongoing and the bus company feels that because of those limitations at this time, they cannot bring a bus down there. So certainly keep you posted as that progresses. We do have, I'm just looking to see if Tamika put this on for, I don't believe so. So if I did, Tamika, if you did, stop me. For Green Communities Grant, we have met with obviously Tamika, CMRPC, Seth Nipe for the possibility of Green Communities Grants. We have looked at some eligible options, which one was having the HVAC system replaced in the public safety building. That will be fully funded by the grant and will cost approximately $75,000. So we have the outfit coming out to give us prices for that to make sure that's all nailed down. They're also looking for other ideas, suggestions we may have had. We did talk about the heating system at the annex. It's antiquated. And they're talking about maybe possibly switching it over to a propane system, which would be covered. And the other alternative was 100% electric with heat plants converting to a propane boiler. I'm against having electric services in an entire building like that. But again, we have to iron all these things out. And the last thing we discussed is several years ago, you'll probably remember Skip. You remember everything in the past 100 years.
Yeah, I do. Yep.
Down at the DPW building, we suggested to put in a wall, a wall after the second bay. So the first two bays in the DPW garage, it's an eight-bay double pull-through, would be heated normally for the work area and the rest would virtually be, for the sake of argument, cold storage, say at 50 or 55 degrees, just to keep the equipment in, keep it obviously above freezing and not have to waste all that energy for heat. So they were, I did talk to Mr. Buckley about this. We did talk about this, I'm going to say seven or eight, nine years ago. So they are coming down to give us a price for that and to see if that's eligible for the grant.
Well, I drafted a team.
What?
Dave's not on mute anymore.
Is Lyndon talking?
Oh, it's Dave. He's not muted.
Good. That's all I have for that one. The next one I have on an update, actually Amy's here to talk about, so I'll leave that for her. And the last one is both Rebecca and I have met with CIPC. We wanted to discuss debt payoff and where we stood and future plans for infrastructure facilities management plan. So some of the debt will be falling off, as I'm sure you all know, in the next two, three years, and we are looking, are in the process of looking for projects to borrow for. The, we're looking at town parking lots, land purchase, which I've discussed briefly with some of you and other facility needs. The time to do that, according to Rebecca and CIPC, is now because this debt is being paid off. The debt that we allow ourselves for is 2% of the town budget. We're eligible for 5.9, but we've all kind of agreed, not kind of, we have agreed that we don't want any borrowing for debt exclusion to increase the tax dollar. So we want to keep it at the same rate so it won't further put any burden on the taxpayer. So really, they won't see it as far as their taxes go, but we'll be able to do some improvements. Once Becky gets back Wednesday, there'll be more to discuss about that. We do have some, I think, exciting prospects, which I've mentioned to some of you, and we'll discuss that at a future date, but that's all I have.
Excellent.
Who is that?
It's Dave.
Steve McCray. Steve McCray.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Does anybody have any conversation, any questions?
I will add one comment to the board as a whole. Now, I just started this recently with Tamika, and what I do is type up my updates for every meeting. She gets a copy of it the day after the meeting. So what I can do, if you guys like in the future, is I can certainly shoot these off to you ahead of time, if that helps. So if you do come up with any questions about it, you'll certainly have them and we can tap into each other, okay? Does that work?
If you have it, that's definitely helpful. I would appreciate it.
Are you going to open your computer, sir?
I'll try. You come over and show me.
No. Okay, that's all I have.
Yes.
Do we have a date for the closing of RDIC?
I'm still on, still told. It's to be at the end of September.
That's next week.
I'm just telling you what I was told. And I actually had a call in to them today, Karen, honestly, but I have not heard back about that item and another. As soon as I find out, I'll certainly let you know. I know you're waiting for that. We all are.
Well, yeah, I just wonder who's going to start lighting the fire under their patooties because I've been hearing now for a long time, it'll be this, it'll be this, it'll be this. Next week is the end of September. They should know when the date is.
Okay. And it has not passed us by yet, so.
Okay.
But I hear you. As soon as I find out, I'll, waiting for that call back and I will let you know.
Yeah. Tell me about it, especially if someone's not sure.
Well, it has to sit in a bank, I mean, it's nice to sit in a bank account, but we can't spend it until.
I know that, but we should still be, it'd be nice to finally see something be done with that property because it's.
Yeah, I know.
Nothing.
Yeah, so May or June would have been nicer, but it is, but it is.
So I have one more thing, Madam Chair, if I may. Just a thank you to Tamika because, well, she rounds up these people for CMRPC, for the grant situations, the, she brings me cookies, but I only got three and Skip got six. And actually, a great asset to have her on the office because there's so many other things that she's able to stay on top of that she shares with me. And I think, excuse me? Can you hear?
Yeah.
So with the help of Tamika, we are certainly, I think, getting things done. So thank you.
Something that not everybody's probably aware of, but last week Tamika was able to transition to full-time. So Tamika is in the office full-time, Monday through Thursday.
She is? You are?
She wasn't there when I was there, did she?
Oh, hey, hey.
Oh, stop it. People do need to use other offices for communication. Oh, anyway, but thank you. Tamika, she is great. It's like, here I am again asking another question and she's right back to me, so I am enjoying having her in the office too.
Thank you very much.
On to old business, which is, we have a couple of things, but Wachusett Road, we're going to continue a discussion on the request to finish gravel roadway.
If I may, through the chair to start this off. As you all know, the board did approve a meeting between Mr. Buckley, myself, Mr. Vitruva, and Mr. Zottoli. We did have that meeting. Our requests to Julian were to give us a plan of his proposed work, recommendations, suggestions for the roadway. He has submitted that. We did review it. We accepted the work to be done. We also asked quite a few questions of legal. And I know, yeah, I believe I sent all of you the responses to legal, they're certainly not public information. We do have them with us. And so I guess the short story is it's up to the board now if you want to make a motion and approve the continued work on Wachusett Road. As you know, you did vote to make an unmaintained town roadway. And the responses from legal kind of sum up everything else that we're looking for. So with that, sir, or through the board, whatever you have, questions you have of Julian or myself, we'll certainly do the best we can to answer them.
I just, I want to make a clarification on the work that you, Gary and Joe did with Mr. Vitruva was to agree to a scope of work. You didn't approve anything. You agreed to a scope of work.
Correct. We just know it's up to the board to approve. It's not up to Mr. Buckley or myself. Correct.
Okay. So I think that the board has had this, the words in red, we've had that for at least five or six days, at least Wednesday, Thursday, to look at, which is, we had gone to legal to just clarify where we stand and some questions that we had, which I wasn't surprised by any of the answers that we got. It's what we've had conversations with them about before, so we're looking to see if we...
I have, through the chair again, I'm sorry, I have shared these with the board, the board only. I haven't shown anyone else, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think they can be here for reference if we have any questions about it, but because it's legal, it's not a public document right now. Does anybody, the board have any conversation about this?
I would make a motion to allow them to improve and maintain the, I don't know where this, the butters maintain the road improved by them, not, no expense to the town of Rutland. And for any, any and all driveway permits on either private or the section the town did, be requested to get a permit from the highway, from the town to address the highway.
Do we need to do all that, do you think?
I think we should be down in writing somewhere.
I do too.
Because there's several places in town where they cannot get driveway permits and the driveways are going 90 degrees downhill or 90 degrees uphill.
To that point, yes, that's right. Thank you. Because you're also coming from another board that you sit on, so you think differently than I do about some things, so that's great.
I think different than anybody in this room.
For any reason.
Yeah, definitely.
So what we're looking for is to approve, well, I'm not going to add to or distract, distract, detract from what you said, Skip, so, but just to clarify that it still is an unmaintained road.
Unmaintained, right. That's already been, that's already been established.
Correct.
I mean, unless, unless we should put in there, I mean, I figure, feel that it's been established. We already made a point of that.
If I may just have a comment. So we have to understand, I'm sure Julian understands this, that it is, as we all know, it has been declared a public way. So in order for a private contractor or others to work on a public way, there would have to be proofs of insurances, liabilities, so on and so forth. So that would have to be taken care of and that would have to be reviewed by legal to make sure it was covered, be it a waiver or a hold harmless, just proof of insurances. So that's just my suggestion to the board.
If I may. I know with the previous town administrator, there was conversation about how to determine that the road was actually a town-owned road and not, that it didn't somehow defer back to the, that the land didn't defer back to the property owners. And this was with the previous town administrator. And it was kind of around and around and just because the, it seemed like it was because the town said that it was a town road, therefore it was a town road. But there was questions as to if deed searches had been done, title searches, anything like that. And we never really got clear answers as far as that. I think in some of the early communications, legal had said that that could be done, should maybe be done at the expense of either the town or the property. It could be deferred to the property owner, I think. I'm not 100% sure, but I was wondering if there was any kind of follow-up. I know at one point I had talked to, I think, the DPW director and he seemed pretty confident that it was a town road, but again, there was no, again, it kind of felt like it was because the town said it was a town road, it was a town road, and not necessarily that that's what the titles or deeds said. So I was just curious if there was.
The confirmation came from the state when I contacted them that it is in fact a town road. What they had previous, what they would call a typo, because as you know, Wachusett Road and a Wachusett Street. It specifically shows Wachusett Road as a public way. But I don't have anything from legal. I have nothing from deeds, titles, so on and so forth. That's just what I have by the state. So if it's declared, if there was a vote by the town to declare that a town road, if that, the results of that vote and measurement, so on and so forth, was sent to the state and they have it registered as a town road, then you're eligible for state aid funds for that. But I can certainly check further, Leah, just.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is a part that I have been struggling to get my head wrapped around, who ultimately, it's not the town. Who, ultimately, it's not the town. I don't think the town can just go out and say, this is a town road, this is a town road. And it's also not, any property owner to say, this is my, this is my land when it's a town road, or this is not my land. So I just wanted to make sure that, again, not specifically, kind of looking not only at this instance, but additional instances. How are these instances determined? Because it feels very arbitrary right now. And if the town says, we want it on a list, and the state says, okay, we'll put it on a list for you. Like, that doesn't necessarily seem that the documentation is there. I don't know.
They can't, they can't just put it on a list by a phone conversation. They have to have the certified vote from town meeting.
That was the town road from Princeton to Rutland.
Right.
That was the town road. I lived there for umpteenth years, right down at the foot of the hill. That was the road. So how can you say it wasn't the road? The town never took, the town of Rutland never abandoned the road. They never took it. They took a town meeting and it was denied.
No action.
No action, I think, was taken.
Well, I think what Leah is, I agree with what Leah is saying. And there are documents that I've seen that make that all, goes back almost to 1600s, from what I've looked at. So I don't know that that's, that sounds like a big conversation. I think that maybe part of our goals and aspirations for the next, that would be something that we could spearhead and not do the work ourselves. But what are all of our streets? What are our roads? What are they, you know, are they listed? Were they supposed to be listed? Are we doing all of that? I do see you in the corner, but I just want to finish because I will move on to something else and forget. But my question for tonight is if, is there anything? If we do a survey of all of our roads, and I don't know if anybody has the question, or that has it, but if we do a survey of all of the roads, as in, do they all, are they all sitting where they're supposed to sit? Are they all labeled correctly? Does, was, would that prevent? If there was a change in that, would that prevent what we're doing tonight? Would we need to delay tonight?
I don't think so.
Good question, because all the bounds, meets and bounds are all marked on deeds. So everything was there from years back?
So my question is, and I also see Lyndon, you've got your hand up, too, but just a second. I think, you know, we are saying it's an unmaintained road. It's a public way, but it's unmaintained by the town. We're not gonna take that back. I think even under the survey, it just might be that we've decided that there are deeds and things like that that says it is not a town road. It is not a public way. So I think that that's how it could go if we found anything more. So I don't think that would preclude us from making a decision tonight.
I don't think it should.
Okay, sir, Mr. Vitruban.
From a surveying engineering company owner and dealing with properties, I go to the town clerk, and they all have a list in every town in Commonwealth of Massachusetts of what is a public road. This road is on the town list. So I've done a lot of surveys in this town, probably more than any other company in the area. And to put more validity to it, the town of Rutland actually hired a surveyor, not me, to do the same. And they came up with the actual public road owned by the town of Rutland. So that shouldn't, that's not even a question that we should be worried about at this point for that particular road.
For the moment, I think. Lyndon?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point in procedure. Skip made a motion, and we really should have a second for discussion.
Before discussion, thank you. Thank you.
So I make a motion, I second for discussion, just to be.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, yeah. Robert Soderbergh, Three Ridge Road. I just, I'm probably rehashing some stuff here from the last meeting. But in 1956, the county commission has had a decree, 1351, to relocate Watchuset Road to its current position. It goes through my present farm right now, which was the previous owners. There's no, there's no discussion that it was a road at one time. But I fully agree with that, it was a road. When it was relocated, that's where the question comes in. It has not been maintained. In fact, in 1987, the vote to discontinue, the reason they wanted to have a vote to discontinue was because it wasn't maintained. So let's have a vote to see if we want to get rid of it. Unfortunately, the landowner had his lawyer contact the town and threaten a lawsuit. So the road's been unmaintained with, I won't get into it. I went over it months ago. But anyways, I fully agree with what Leah's saying to get a title search done. I think based on an attorney that the Ad Commission hired, when they did the Chapter 61A thing, that was her recommendation to get a title search done. So I don't think it's any harm to do that at this point. Because if you look at the Zoddyly's deed, they own the road. Their property lines go under the road. When Joe Buckley did the survey, there was no, there was no markers. They assumed.
There were markers. There were stone walls along the entire roadway. The base of the wall is the marker.
Can I continue, please?
No, because you're talking nonsense.
That's enough.
I'm sorry. There was no, on the deed, the property line goes under the road. It clearly states that. The town then goes, records at the registry of deed that they own the road. With look at the Zoddyly's deed, they own the road. So a title search would resolve this. I don't see what any issue is with a title search.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll talk about roads going forward. But yes, Lyndon, do you still have your hand up?
Yeah, just for further clarification, when we're saying that the town will be responsible for maintaining it, so does that include plowing, snow?
That's maintenance of the road, is it not?
Right. I just want to clarify and make sure that the town, because there are some private roads that are being plowed regardless. So I just want to clarify with that.
Right, and we have a fixed list for that, and we're not adding to that. So, agreed. Any further discussion?
I mean, my comments from a few weeks ago, a month ago, or whatever, kind of still hold. I feel like there's been a lot of discussion chatter kind of in town recently about the gravel, existing gravel roads that are or are not town-maintained. Some of them are private roads. And there's, you know, pushes to get the town to accept more of the private gravel, private roads as town roads and take over that maintenance and care and everything. And I still really struggle with not having ducks in a row and funding to have a comprehensive plan for our existing roads and gravel roads in town. That then, even though we, this board has discontinued maintenance on this, on Watchuset Road, that we're still entertaining the idea of potentially putting additional homeowners on a road that they're going to be responsible for maintaining because it seems like there has not been very clear communication to a lot of individuals, homeowners in similar situations, that that expense is falling to them also or them as a comprehensive unit. And so I worry, you know, none of this is new. My concerns, at least for me, my concerns still are my concerns.
I completely are on board because now I just talked about Glenwood Road, or is it Place?
Glenwood Place Extensions.
You know, we've got a gravel road that a bus can't go down because it can't turn around, and that's gonna happen here. The bus is not gonna be able to.
We'll have an area that it can turn around on. There already is an area at the end, right at the town of Princeton. There's a big turnaround after your dump trucks turn around on.
So just, that's our concern.
We'll take care of that.
So we don't want, we say yes, we be good neighbors and do that. And then we're concerned that something like that's gonna come up, and then we're gonna be on a Glenwood Place Extension situation again, where we don't know what to do about because there's not much we can do. All right. Are we ready to take a vote? We need to do a roll call.
Glock, aye. Y'all been nay?
White man nay.
Lyndon?
Nichols nay.
Carol's gonna abstain, because it doesn't make a difference.
So can we drive up this road? Are you guys telling us that this road doesn't exist? I don't understand what this even, what just went down here. What did, can we request, what did town council say when specific questions were asked at the meeting between Mrs. Zoddyly, Joe Buckley, Gary, and myself? And one of them was, do we have the right to maintain the road in front of our properties? What was the answer to that? If the road was not being maintained by the town, what did we get for an answer? Because that was the whole reason for that meeting, so.
The responsibility for maintenance falls to the abutters, and the abutters could make repairs and improvements.
So that's all we're asking? That's from your town council? That's all we're asking? And.
It is the better practice that the town authorize and regulate the repairs and/or improvements.
And that's why we went to Joe Buckley, went to Gary. So we've actually followed everything that, for the last six months, that you've asked us to do, and we've done it. And now I'd like you to rethink what we just asked to have. We're asking to maintain. We're gonna bring some gravel down there so Mrs. Zoddyly can drive down to his properties without issues, just like what the town did at the beginning. So that's all we're asking for is, so that. Prior to this, when we were working down there, Mr. Buckley said, this is a public road. You cannot unload or load any of your machinery. It's just like a public road. We're in charge of this. You can't do anything without telling us what you're doing. Like, when the machine unloads on a paved road, you can't scarr it up, or you have to fix it and all that. So I said, all right, we're not doing any of that on this road. We have room to get the machines off the traveled way and unload. And we've had no issues with that. But we want to now be able to drive down, use our road. And Mr. Zoddyly wants to use his road. And I believe you just read what town council says is completely okay for us to do. So do we actually need you? We went through the process, but it appears that by law or by your attorneys, that we are okay to maintain it to a standard of getting to his properties. So I guess that's the answer. I know Mr. Buckley's all right with it because when we had our meeting, he saw the, and I said, we're gonna do it the way you would do any other gravel road, so it's already a base for future. And it's a standard, it's a Massachusetts standard. The details, highly detailed plan with highly detailed section what we're doing every fifty feet. And he was good with that.
So what would be missing from our relationship is any liability issues? Because we're not, as a board, we've decided not to do that, so we wouldn't be entering into any kind of a.
You said unmaintained.
No liability.
If they do anything with the property, anyone who isn't interested in it realizes this is a gravel road, that the town is not. I've built a couple of roads in this town. Up until I had them accepted, they were my responsibility. I understand that. This is the same thing Mr. Zoddyly understands. I built Moose Crossing, I built Sunset Ridge. And I owned those roads for a long while. And I plowed them, I actually plowed them myself for a while. I understand that. And that's what we're willing to do. But we want to do it on the up and up, so everybody understands. So there's no one coming and saying, what are they doing down there? That's why we've come to you. And we're hoping that. I would like to leave and tell Mrs., he happens to be in Florida right now. He couldn't make the meeting, to tell him that. We'll line up whoever, whether it's this fall or next spring. And it's an unmaintained road. You have nothing to do with that road, none of the costs. We'll get a, ensure what he's gonna do to work. We'll have the insurances, and everything is on the up and up. And when it's done, it's the same as it is right now. But at least now, he can drive his vehicle down there with more ease.
I'm just kind of curious, when was the last time Mr. Zoddyly drove down that road?
I hear you, I don't know that it's.
About two weeks ago. He was with me in my two-wheel-drive Chevy.
Can I, just one other?
Yeah.
So I think, you know, as I mentioned, Mr. Zoddyly might have every right to do that because I think he owns the road. Getting back to Leah's point, why not have, why don't you hold this off and get a?
Well, I hear you, and we want to do that project. I think, at least I'm gonna bring it forward, and I think Leah will do that with me. But, I mean, at this point, the board has said that they're not willing to move forward on this. The only thing that I am now concerned about is liability. Is that worth, you, Gary, so that you can tell me, should we be calling our attorney in the morning to find out?
Might have to follow up on the responses.
This is what the board.
Okay.
And then you can have a clear conversation with them.
Could I get, does Zoddyly's get what was just, I know you read it off of there. Could they get what town council actually said about that?
I'd like you to get something from them tomorrow, and then you can come up with something that we might be able to give.
Okay. All right, I'll do that.
Just through the chair, I assume that Joe Buckley is not present at the meeting?
No, Joe is not here.
Okay, I mean, because, you know, I'd like him to be part of the discussion. I know he said that he was reviewed it, but.
Yeah.
I think it's important that he be part of the discussion.
Yeah, because Gary had attended the meetings with Joe, I thought that it wasn't imperative that he be here tonight, but.
My concern is that Joe has been an advocate to eliminate gravel roads, a lot of what Leah talked about. So I really want to have a fuller understanding of what he is thinking. If he thinks that this gravel road is okay, but we need to pay the other gravel roads. So that's my concern. Like Leah said, you know, we've had a lot of problems with gravel roads. So I would just like to hear his opinion on why he supports continuing with another gravel road, where he's complaining about all the other stuff. That's just a concern I have.
Okay.
To make it a public road, you know, we could request it be hot dog, you know, a new road. There's no reason we can't.
Yes.
I just actually, I'm Carla Zoddyly. My grandparents bought that land eighty years ago. I grew up there. I'm just curious. We know it's a road. I think we've been through that. That's been litigated several times. We're not asking the town for anything. We're gonna fix the road. I'm confused as to why you would choose to. Why would you choose not to just allow us to do that if you are not willing to? I'm confused as to what's going on here.
Well, second part, are you telling us right now that we have nothing to say about that road? So fix your, fix the throttle so you don't break your axle. And Joe Buckley won't come and say, get the machine out of the road. That's all I've been trying to avoid, is having, I have a very good relationship with Joe. I have never done anything with all the projects that I've worked on. If that's what you want, that's what you want. So now I'm being told that, well, you can't have this or that. And it's not, it's not right, it's not fair. It's, and I think, from what you read, it sounds like your town council is saying they have the right to do this, to maintain their road.[1726.95] I only, I'm only asking as a good faith to the town of Rutland. Mrs. Oddly says, "I don't want to ruffle any feathers with the DPW or with the select board. Let's get it so that everyone's on board, so if I hire a machine, I don't have a DPW telling me to shut down and it costs me." So right now, it sounds like he can fix what he needs to fix.
And that's what I want to have Gary find out tomorrow.
So we'll find this out by the end of this week, where it stands?
At Baltimore.
Okay, I guess that's all we can do.
And I am curious, what is, what is, why is it going here? I don't understand.
If, if, I can't speak for the, the board is the one who said... Well, the board's, they have said nay and that's, I can't speak for them. I wouldn't do it here and I wouldn't do it outside of here.
But they said nay, yeah, what was the actual nay to that?
Not allowing us to do it, or what was the nay?
What was the nay?
Not allowing you.
To fix the road that services his property?
Is that the way that, that was my motion, I may...
The motion was, yes.
And town council basically said, "You can't do that." We have the rights. I will wait to hear from you, Gary. And I guess we won't be coming here again.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if it matters or not, but that land is technically still in chapter land.
Yeah.
And I'm still waiting for the intent to sell the property from Mr. Oddly, which gives the town the first right of refusal at that point.
Now that's through the chair, through the chair. We had requested, the assessors, I had four questions on the chapter situation. And we received response on those four questions. And nowhere in my request to you were we saying, "We're selling the property or changing the use."
Mrs. Oddly has told me.
We asked, in writing, we asked, "What is the process to remove it from chapter land?" Without going through the other process we tried in January. And I have a response back to your letter in the next day or so.
That was your and I email, yes. But Mr. Oddly and I have spoken in my office and we have also spoken on the phone. And he's told me very clearly it's his intent to sell.
Eventually, yes.
Just saying, would that apply?
Eventually, yes.
That is...
Doesn't everybody have intentions to sell? Is that, you can't take that out of context.
Yes, but there is rules and regulations that go along with that.
Exactly, and we're asking you on the process, which you've answered. And I have questions, because some of them were, you'll see the email in the next day or so on that. And if he removes it and does nothing to it, right now, it's still forestry and it's still hayfields. It's in the same use. If he holds it in that condition until after July 1st of next year, it's over.
He's not applied to chapter land again. He's deceased and desist, the farmer who was farming the land and he has drawn up an A and R...
Is it only on farmer account?
He has drawn up an A and R for thirty-two lots.
Yes, he did. I have been drawing up an A and R for a thousand lots.
Changes the use of the land.
No, he did not change. It's still forest and it's still fields. What has changed in use?
He's told me he's perked the lots and he's got them ready...
I've actually perked them for him, so you're right. But it doesn't change the use of the land.
Changes the use of the land.
How?
Because the land is open for forest and open for farming, not open for building.
And that's what it is right now. So, it's been tested to see what he has in the future. If he has to sell it today, you're correct. He's asking, "How long do we keep it without it in chapter land and in the same use?" And the law is clear, one year. That's the process he's going through. And I will, I'll discuss that through the email, because I'll in writing for you. Because your answers were not quite to the question, but we'll get through that. But the change of use has not happened. It's not a cornfield, it's a hayfield. And in the farmer world, you do want to change crops once in a while. So you don't want to always go corn, 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 you want to...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
I'll have a discussion with the assessors in the morning.
Thank you.
So we'll wait to hear from Gary tomorrow, about 2:30.
Well, I don't know if they're open then, but I will, we'll hear from him. I assure you, I will call him.
We'll go from here, all we can do. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a revised liquor license application, which Tamika has been working on for us. Thank you, Tamika. So she, Tamika had found some holes in the questions we were asking and she needed to go back and forth. And now that she's working with ABCC, she knows a lot more about what to ask for. So she has come up with a cover sheet, a form that she will have applicants fill out. So, is there anything that you want to add to that?
No, so I just basically, after the few conversations that we've had, can you hear me? After the few conversations we had, I just kinda went back to the drawing board, filled in some information that the board wanted to have on there. And Carol had recommended having a separate checklist, so I created the checklist to go with it. So basically, this should encompass all of the information that we need to know in the town and also transmit information that applicants need to know, that I don't think was explicit before. There was also an emailed response from Joanna at Maya that I shared with you guys, that basically just says, you know, that if it's taking place on town property, the town should be listed as an additional insured. Carol had asked about the liability on the town and she basically said, "There isn't a way to completely prevent it because anybody can sue for any reason, but as long as we do that, we're covering ourselves to the best of our ability." Unless the board had other questions or additions. You know, my hope at this point was that the board would be comfortable with me using these forms going forward.
Do you need us to accept, vote on these and accept them, or we just...
It's up, it's up to you guys. It's not necessary to make a motion, just as long as I know that you guys are okay if I make these, the final version, I guess.
I don't find there's anything lacking at this point. One of the things that we wanted to know was a little bit more information about making sure that there are TIP certified servers. And you've got space for two, which I think is fine. Somebody could do them someplace else or put two names on a line. But the TIP certification number and where they are, which, they wouldn't be certified with a person. They are certified with TIPS. But you're asking what establishment they work for. They might work for another restaurant, but they're TIP certified and somebody has grabbed them to help serve at some town event. So, I'm not sure that that's a question that we need to ask, but it's there and...
I kept it there just simply because that was actually on the previous application. So I had kept it there. ABCC said that whether or not the person serving is TIP certified is really up to the local licensing authority. So where it was on there before, and it's good information to have, I just kept it there.
That sounds great. If anybody has any questions, I don't think we need to put this to a vote. You know, if anything comes up and you find that, if it's a small tweak, I think we're good with just tweaking it. If you think that there's a major revision at some point that needs to happen, let us know.
Can I just ask one question, if I may? The way this is written, it just says, "Will you be using professional certified bartenders?" It doesn't, that kind of leads to believe that, yes, we want, like, the town wants professional certified bartenders. But I'm wondering if that's always the case and if for, you know, what if they, what if the applicant puts no? Like, what if it's...
I think you asked Maya that.
Yes, so essentially, I just wanted it to be clear on the application whether or not they're using certified bartenders. They are not required to. So that's why I left it as an open ended question. So if they have one, there's a spot for them to put that person's information. If they don't, and something were to happen, we could pull out the application and say, "We asked and they said no, they did not," type of thing.
Which I find it strange. And I wonder if at some point we might want to, if we have the authority as a board to require it at some point.
ABCC said that it is at the discretion of the local licensing authority to determine if that is something that they want to require.
Does anybody want to talk about that now, or...
I think it's okay right now and then, I just, I don't know what goes into TIP certification. And I, you know, I think most of our bigger events people, we've had, the establishments have had TIP certified individuals. But I am wondering if for some of the smaller kind of like fundraiser type things, like smaller type events, if they would or not, and if it becomes a hindrance for an otherwise like fundraising opportunity. I think also there's a number of individuals in town who are TIP certified and would probably be willing to kind of work with organizations.
Be on premises or something.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Is it because the one certified business, it's an umbrella that covers everyone? Is that how it works? Is that what they said?
Can you, I don't have...
It's not like the business itself has, is certified?
Correct.
That covers everybody as far as servers and everything?
No, the server, the TIP certification is individual. The liability insurance covers the business as a whole. Yeah, but each person serves as their own individual, I guess, yeah.
There's like specific training to become TIP certified, you have to attend, yeah. But, yeah, I think it's fine. I just, you know what I mean, like, maybe that's something we as a board just think about and...
We could take, you keep an eye on it and if you find that most don't, we may have to say, come back and just weigh a lot. Again, it's just, it comes down to liability, it's not...
Absolutely, and I think that a big change was that, I made sure to put on there that only nonprofits can serve all beverages. Because I know that that was something that was not clear and there definitely had been times when it may have slipped through the cracks. So I think that very explicitly states that that is the case, so there's no confusion going forward.
And thank you for adding and referencing MGL for that.
Oh, yeah. I think that was a great suggestion.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I think, well done. If anybody doesn't have any questions, we can... Thank you very much, Tamika.
You're welcome.
So the next one was waivers for volunteers, but Tamika has let me know that she was still seeking some further information that didn't come through this week. So we are going to put that off until such time as she gets the information. Century Tree Bar and Grill, ABCC has issued an approval. And we have the license to sign, so...
Motion to issue?
Okay.
Not motion to sign.
Motion to sign, I mean, issue of sign, yeah.
Waitmen seconds. And just for clarification, this is because of the change in ownership, right?
Correct.
That's correct, yes.
Now, are they, have they fully taken over the business or are they waiting for these pieces to go through?
I want to, I think he said that the final sale went through maybe last week sometime. But they have already started taking over operations and, yeah, running the business over there. Yep, so this is just for the transfer. You guys had previously issued this back in June, I think it was. And we've just been waiting for ABCC.
So roll call to...
Clark, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Waitmen, aye.
Nichols, aye.
And Benoit, aye. All right.
And just, if I may, just because it's on my, in my brain, because we just did this. Do you know off the top of your head how many liquor licenses we still have in town available? Like, because I know we've, because they come off and on and I know there's alcohol versus beer and wine.
Yeah, so it varies depending on what type and if it's on premise and off premise. So I don't know off the top of my head, but I do have that quota and can email it to you if you're curious to know.
I'm just curious.
I actually, so I just today got the licensing renewal information from ABCC. And they're going to be updating those quotas once we provide them with our estimated population for next year. So those numbers will be changing soon, but I do have them as of June, was the last time they did it.
Okay. Yeah, it's not anything urgent, but I was just curious. Because I know we've had some new added, but then some come off and some just switch hands and...
We do still have some available in each category, I know that, I just don't know the number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and I think Amy, you're gonna help us with the Chapter 61A process.
Actually, I was just recommending that the board adopt the first right of refusal policy, which is based upon Chapter 61, Section 8 laws, which I do have a copy of them, they're five pages long. We didn't know that I was going to bring them, so I didn't make a copy for anyone, so... It's just come to my attention several times since I've been here that there's no policy in place and I just thought it would be better for everybody involved if there was a procedure which we all had to follow.
If I may, Amy, through, you work with other towns and everything. Is it fairly common that towns adopt?
Yeah, other towns' policies and treat them to suit the town, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Tamika, you wrote something up.
Yeah, where's the...
Where did this one come from? So is this the same, same thing?
That is what I wrote, yeah.
Here, you can, I'll look it up here on my computer, in that way.
No, I shouldn't. No, I know it, but they should be...
Have you, did you look, you looked at other towns too? I just, without having looked at the MGL and then what you wrote, I know somebody else sent us something from another town that I did not, I just got today, so I didn't have time to go side by side.
Every town is individual in what works for them. I mean, this is from another town that I'm in that has very strong chapter land laws and procedures in which I thought that this town could benefit from due to the fact that we have so much chapter land. And that seems to be coming out of chapter lately, you know. So things have come up in which I would appreciate a policy and procedures in which to follow so that I could make the homeowner aware as to what the whole procedure is to make sure that we do it right.
I agree. Has everybody had time to look at this? I, I'm leaning toward pausing just to give myself more time to look at the MGL policy, at the MGL and what you wrote up and what somebody else sent us, I can't remember the town, and just do a side by side. I also saw this as a great opportunity to do kind of an if and chart to start with that. So I know it doesn't need to be a part of the policy, but I thought that that might be a good thing. Just a quick, you know, are you doing it this, then do this. And you're doing this, rather than reading a lot of text.
Sure.
That's how my brain works, but...
Prove, absolutely.
I don't know if anybody else has had time, that's just me. So if the board is ready to go with this, to read it, or if you want another two weeks to look at it.
And there's state law anyway.
Yes, it all comes from the state law.
But there's policy that you've kind of directed. It doesn't go against the law, but it's, it is policy. It's similar to what we've decided, you know, a little bit more simplistic, but the form for filling out a liquor license request. So, you know, we've got the law and then we ask these questions and...
And this is just a draft. I mean, with the laws, if you guys want to put some changes into it or you think something should be added or subtract, I'll be happy to do whatever you wanted to do. But I just thought that at least this is a starting point to talk about, okay, how can we make this as streamlined as possible for everybody involved? And make sure that the town knows what its rights and benefits are as far as making sure the first right of refusal is theirs.
Do you think or have other towns run this by their legal before you put it into policy?
I believe the town in which I did take it from, yes, it did.
Okay, so they are, but that's not ours.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So I would even say that we might consider that too going forward.
I was gonna say, I fully support it. I think that there are just a few little tweaks for our, in looking under the towns on the back page for anybody that has their paper from seventy-nine, that was included in our packet. Under Town's Response, it says number two, the town administrator, and then there's bullet points. We currently don't have an official open space implementation committee. That's one thing that's kind of come up out of our master plan and open space and recreation policy updating committee is the need for that. And then, our land trust situation is kind of fluid right now.
Okay.
And so, something along, you know, land trust or something, but we don't, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we currently have a land trust that we're working solely with.
Okay, we can tweak that into the policy.
Right, but I think generally, like overall, I think it's a great policy and it helps you as the assessor's office, I think, to have something to work with the homeowners, the landowners, as well as us as boards, as well as the other interested boards and commissions. You know, that it's an official dissemination of information, because we've been lacking in that oftentimes as well. So that there's an official, it's something I've been kind of pushing for back and forth, not realizing that there wasn't an official town policy, we just kind of were following MGL. But I think if we can make a concerted effort as a board to look at policies and get that on board and then involve the other boards and commissions also in departments, because you guys are the ones that are dealing with the public.
Sure, a lot of agencies here.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
Has it been passed to the A Commission? Because I feel that we should be going over this also.
That's a great, a great thought. It probably should go to all of the commissions and boards that would handle it, so...
One of the benefits I thought was that the town also has the right to maybe defer to like an Audubon or DC or something like that, who may have more funds than the town at the time and identifies this open space or a particular parcel is something of great value to the town. So there's other resources that the town to have to be able to purchase that parcel.
Okay, these cooperative land trusts, for instance.
Right. So we would make a list of all the resources that we would have to be able to contact them if it was something that we really needed to push forward to and add more resources.
Yeah. There's a lot of things, like Lee said, a lot of things that we should have policy with. We don't need to reinvent the wheel or construct knowledge every time we want to do something, so...
But if, I mean, if possible, I would kind of conceptually support this. I think that it needs a little bit of tweaking. And I definitely, if you don't mind, getting input kind of from conservation, planning, A-Com, and even historic commission, I think those, are there any other boards and commissions? If sixty-one A comes in right now, that we... if sixty-one A comes in right now that we disseminate to?
No.
It's, it's Planning Board, A I com, Conservation Commission, I think those are the only three that are required. I think sometimes we try to do R D I C and maybe C I P C just as a courtesy for information, if they had any, you know, thoughts as to, oh, like longer term plans. Um, but I think that those are the ones that are in M G L, I think, to disseminate and require responses.
Yeah.
Um, so if you don't mind?
No, I welcome it, please, absolutely, the more the better, yeah.
Love it. So we'll, if our board could take a look at it and we'll give, give our feedback.
Okay, excellent.
And can we ask that it is disseminated to other boards for...
Yes, do, yes.
Thanks for the work on it.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so Naquag Elementary P T O is requesting that we approve their first annual Fall Fest five K and Fun Run. Um, it will, it is slated to be held on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two at five P M, starting at Naquag Elementary. Um, so it, it doesn't say this on here, but I, if, if what I've read on Facebook is correct, um, not including the children, the children will stay on premise at Naquag. Um, but the adults and probably older, older kids, but the, the children themselves won't be. They will leave the Naquag Elementary lot, go down Main Street toward Kenwood, down Kenwood and follow Kenwood all the way through to Maple Ave, and then from Maple Ave back up to Main Street and then back to Naquag. Um, and I guess that's about five K, so, um...
Carol, if I may, they're gonna turn up at Rutland Heights.
Rutland Heights, okay, good, thank you.
They're cheating.
They're on a, they're, they're tied by then. Thank you, yes, it does say that. Um, they've hired two police details, which Chief Monaco has been in conversation with them, and they're going to sign liability waivers and, um, get, getting those to us before the event. Um, so we've got to hurry up and get the liability waivers going. Um, so we need to approve this, um, as a first annual?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first annual Fall Fest five K and Fun Run for the Naquag Elementary P T O on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at five P M.
And I have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Glock aye.
Galvin aye?
Whiteman aye.
Nichols aye.
And Benoit aye. Excellent. All right, and speaking of chapter sixty-one A, we have, um... Carrie, do you want to, who wants to present this? Because I only have passing knowledge of... Amy, are you, you're here for this one?
I'm not sure.
On Emerald Road?
Oh, yes, yes.
Are you tired, Amy?
A little bit. Um, she, um, Ms. Hussey has come to us saying that she has not exactly sure exactly how much land, but she'd like to sell part of it to D C R, which would technically keep their same, um, uses. It's already in, it would be protected land. So technically, the town doesn't have the right of first refusal because it's not going for a change of use, but she just wants to make sure that she's approved everything with everybody to let you know that's what her intentions are.
So we don't have a policy in place yet, but I did, there is the public hearing. Now, are you, if, if this policy was in place today, would you, would this be saying that we would need to have a public hearing beforehand?
Not for her, because it doesn't change the use, just putting it to another protected organization's...
So we don't have any right of first refusal?
Exactly. The use stays exactly the same as, as any, if anything, it's more strict, um, for the D C R, because it's part of the wetlands area, water protection area that she's selling it to them for.
And has she hasn't identified, I know she's done surveying and things like that already, but...
No, she, she said that she was gonna give us more information. I haven't heard anything from her yet. Um, she was just kind of fishing around at the time. Um, and I wanted to find out if this was something that you guys would be okay if I just said, it's not changing any use, you're gonna sell it, it's gonna stay protected, it's gonna stay open space, it's gonna stay, you know, as the use it's already in. I said I would bring it to the board and make sure everything is above board and that we were good to go.
And it takes it all off the tax bill, takes all, takes it off our tax rolls.
Well, technically, because it's in chapter, so we're getting much...
Yeah, but we get a little bit. We go this way, we get nothing.
Right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Nothing, not a dime.
But it keeps it safe, keeps those animals, keeps that habitat, keeps all that land protected.
They'll go there with me.
Not the bear who lives coming into my house? Um, so I, I guess we're looking for a motion to, it, it, um, agree that Elizabeth Hussey can move forward with conversations about getting, selling the land to D C R. So move, or a second? There's no pressure. If we want to table this and, and wait another two weeks, maul it over.
Yeah, I agree, let's table this right now, because I don't know.
Because it's changing, it's, it's changing hands, even though it's not going from a different use. We should be able, the town should be able to say, well, gee, maybe we're interested.
So I, I would, I would suggest that you look at, pull, pull the chap, pull the M G L law, look at the draft policy that Amy put together, and keep this in mind.
Yes.
Um, just as a...
What I read.
Does it follow this?
If I may say, one of the things that you could benefit from is having the town council, including the conversation we had earlier, define exactly what is change in use for us. That, because it's very subjective, I mean, from what you're saying, from what Mr. Fuppa, uh, Mantruba's saying, it's subjective. I mean, in my, I, I think that that land has changed use, he doesn't think so. So I'm sure there is back and forth and many opinions. Lawyers are the ones that argue the law the best, I would put it in their hands to decide what exactly change of use means.
So change of use for us is that it's on the tax roll, even though it's in chapter, it's a change of use for the town, um, side, at least are, are us looking in.
As far as the taxation side, but the land side...
So D C R gonna allow the hay fields to be hay?
Not likely. She may not be, she might not be.
It's part of forestry there, so, so I think that's the part that she's looking to put in.
It's forestry, probably not the fields.
I think also, um, that the town does have some level of agreement with the state to receive, um, essentially, almost like pilot money, but it's not pilot money.
In lieu of?
In lieu of taxes for the amount of land that the state, um, owns in town.
Yes.
And so I don't know, I think that Becky's office handled, you, your office probably with Becky's office, I assume, handle that.
Yes.
And I don't know how often that list is updated if D C R, it doesn't, just looking briefly, it doesn't look like this is going to be a substantial pe, like a huge...
I think she was saying like ten acres.
Ten acres?
Yeah.
Because she's got almost ninety acres.
Yeah, but I don't think she's gonna put, she was just looking for a piece. I think they had approached her about it being part of the watershed protection area, potentially, and, you know, I think that's what the, how the conversation came up.
And so I, I don't know how frequently the percent of, um, state owned land in town is looked at. I assume it's probably yearly, but I don't know for sure. It's not a question I've ever thought to ask, and maybe there is some value in looking at that, um, more thoroughly and seeing if there's any sort of, uh, improved agreement we could reach with the state, especially with Kim and Ann's assistance or something, um, and everything that's been going on in the prison camps and, and, and everything. So, um, I, I guess one of my questions would be kind of how much land she's looking to, to sell, um, and, yeah.
So add that to your list. For K P, what is change of use?
Okay, all right.
Um, not on the agenda, so I want to ask a question. Um, we received a request from Historical Commission as well as other boards today to get together and, individually and/or boards, commissions, committees to support, if we're so led to, to support, um, keeping the prison camps. Because I don't know if you know that they're, they're talking about getting rid of them again. Um, we just fought this battle last year, we got fifty thousand dollars in grant funding to do things over there. We, signs have been put up, or at least I know they were, they were talked about being ordered, we'd approved them. Um, I don't know if this board wants to consider adding to the agenda, putting, you know, putting on the agenda for tonight, somebody drafting a letter in support of the prison camps, um, if you want to just do it individually.
Should do it as a whole board.
I was gonna say, I think there's value to it.
It's stronger, I agree, I just...
So if we draft the letter and get it signed, and it drafted and Tamika can have the option to stop by and sign it?
Put that on the agenda?
On the agenda?
We need to have, if, if we're gonna vote on something, we have to put it on the agenda. Right?
We're not voting on it, we're just saying we want to do it.
Do we, we don't...
So I make, I make a motion that we put this on the agenda as an unanticipated item?
Thank you.
Whiteman seconds.
Roll call?
Glock aye.
Galvin aye?
Whiteman aye.
Nichols aye.
Okay, discussion, sir.
Just to let you know, I'm on the advisory committee. Our next meeting is November seventeenth, I think, might be the night of the town meeting, but, uh, and that's the night that Dan will be letting us know, one way or another.
That's the one way or the other?
Uh, well, he's gonna let us know if it's, what he's gonna be doing, so...
Dan's from D C R, right?
That is correct.
Just for clarification.
The Historical Commission is meeting, um, September twenty-seventh, and so they were hoping to have letters of support by that meeting to provide.
Um, all right, so it's on the agenda, so can I get a, a motion to...
I make, I make a motion that the board send a letter of support.
Can, can that be with just maybe my signature for expediency? Or does it need to, would it be better to have anybody sign it?
I think everybody could sign.
Okay, that's fine.
Just write the letter and leave it with Tamika within...
And if she's, if she needs it by, I mean, if Historical needs it, if their next meeting is September twenty-seventh, we're meeting on the twenty-sixth, so at the...
We could sign it then?
If needed, you know, ideally we could pop in and sign it before, but if necessary, right? I mean...
Yikes.
All right. Um, so we're first, second, and roll call to?
Glock aye.
Galvin aye?
Whiteman aye.
Nichols aye.
And Benoit aye. Thank you all for taking that last minute. All right.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
No, it's fine. We will be meeting September twenty-sixth for, um, goals and objectives, but that's all. Roll call, adjourned?
Galvin aye?
Whiteman aye.
And Benoit aye?
Nichols aye.